Nope, it just turned nine o'clock. Okay. All right, would you please rise and join me in slinging our flag this morning and remain standing for a moment of silence? Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Take up our first item, which is the Board of Supervisors Matters, and I'll turn to Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things that I wanted to go over. First of all, last week at the retirement boarding board meeting, we had a presentation from a couple of firms, and I believe that the board is very seriously evaluating moving forward or not with certain high-cost investments, and hedge funds being one of them that aren't necessarily delivering the returns that they're anticipated to, or sold to the board in doing. And so I think that that's very prudent, and I appreciate the retirement board looking very closely to make sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck, especially since the county has contributed a significant amount of money into the pool and is expecting a given level of return that has been seen over the last few years. But rest assured, the board is not changing its strategy of investments that have delivered returns that this board made assumptions based upon. So I wanted to go over that. And then this Friday, there's a meeting of the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority, where preliminary rate renewals will be gone over for this upcoming health plan year on a preliminary basis. It looks like there's going to be an increase. It just depends upon the final month of claims that's considered in the renewal, and also how the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority Board of Directors chooses to rate in this upcoming year. There are some choices in front of them, so just wanted to make that point.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Shuckman.
Yes, it's been a few weeks, so a lot has happened, a lot of little things. Two things I just want to focus on. On the 29th of June, I attended the Kings-Tolary Homeless Alliance's Housing Heroes Luncheon and Awards. That was an opportunity to recognize folks throughout our community that are giving a big helping hand to those who are homeless. And what got me the most is there were two gentlemen there who were honored, who had previously been homeless, had given their story, and through, you know, programs throughout the county and whatnot, they are now housed and working and living fruitful lives, and they were very appreciative of that. So, and then the other thing is last, late last week, we had a meeting. We have a committee that's been meeting for a few months or more regarding our display in the Capitol.
A year.
And, what's that?
Over a year.
I know, well, 12 months. But it's coming along very well. I think we got, we got something really good going, and so hopefully in the next four to five months, we'll maybe be unveiling something here at the meeting. So that's all I have to share.
Good. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you. Oh, boy. The committee that won't go away.
[laughing] The committee.
This, this last week, I attended the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority, which is the authority of Tempest Flat, and as Supervisor Worley was out of town and unavailable. And the, I guess the biggest highlight of that is, you know, moving forward, what options are that investors, irrigation districts are, are looking at, you know, what makes financial sense for them as, as far as their costs to, to invest in that. And the other highlight is that Supervisor Worley not being there was nominated to a committee to, to work with those. I don't know if I shared that with you, but consider yourself informed.
No, you.
You're on another committee to work with them on, on some of the outstanding issues with some of the water agencies.
Thanks for filling in for me.
You're welcome, anytime. That's what I'm here for.
I think he was upset he had to fill in for you. He nominated you.
That's because you're held in such high regard, and everyone, it was a unanimous decision to put you in there. This last Saturday, I also participated in, in the iFoster Laptop Giveaway. I won't share too much, because I know we're going to have a presentation in just a few more minutes, but that was an excellent event. And I, I look forward to, hoping to continue to partner with them in the future. And, and I know this will probably be a part of the presentation, but this was as a result of our membership with RCRC. There was a $400,000 contribution from RCRC to iFoster, and as we're the largest county of RCRC, we've received the most benefit from that. So that's 133 individuals that qualified for that. I think we distributed a little over 80 that day, and so it was, it was a great event. We also had the Three Rivers Hot Dog Festival, and Chief Norman was up there, you know, giving out some hot dogs, and, boy, those vegetarian dogs, ooh. Man, I don't know how much you're gonna pay me to get one of those down. That was, they did not look appetizing.
You gotta have those in Three Rivers, though.
Exactly, he had a few of those. And, you know, we, we, there was a nice little bucket brigade challenge, and last year, the Sequoia-Kings Canyon Fire Department or Group, they, they won the, the initial competition. This year, CalFire won. Our county did not participate, because they actually worked, and they actually, you know, do the barbecuing, so, you know, they, and we know hands down that they would win. So it was, it's really not a competition between the other guys that, you know, that claim they're firefighters, but, you know, just kind of hang out. And so, so that, so it was, this year, CalFire took it, and so there's a little bit of rivalry. And I, then the chief and I had a little competition, and, and I will admit that I, I lost, and I think the chief was being generous. I, I saw him slowing down, and I don't think that has anything to do with his age, I just think that he wanted to make it a little more competitive. So you don't think that I didn't notice that, but I did, so. So anyway, I'm, I, that was, that was nice. And this week, we have the Sun Gazette, the local newspaper, is having a football preview at Cafe 210 Thursday night. And so they'll have their, their seasonal publication that, that highlights the county's football programs, and they'll have some of the team players and coaches here in town, and just, it's about that time, it's about that time, that season. So I'll be attending that, and that's all I have to share.
Very good. Supervisor Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received some good words, some good news, I should say, on Success Dam about two weeks ago. We got the spillway raising completely funded, between $73 and $84 million. They completely redesigned the spillway. They're moving it about another 400 feet down, and they're gonna wall it up 10 feet on both sides, and they're gonna pour 100-foot slab at the base, so that it's all stable. But I don't think that the irrigation districts or the county or anybody's gonna have to put in any kind of funds. So we got this thing completely funded by the Corps, and I think it was due to the fact that President Trump put $15 billion into infrastructure, to, to fortify our infrastructure throughout the nation, and that's where they drew this money from. So we were a winner on that one. That's been a long struggle, ever since 2003 is when they shut that, that project down, and it's been this long now, getting it back and going through all the studies. We don't want to go there, but anyway. So we are fully funded. Hopefully, it's gonna get started sooner than, they were thinking 2023, and Dick Schaefer said, "No, no, 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 we're gonna get that started a lot sooner than that, if, if we have to get involved here locally and, and do some of the engineering, farm the engineering out." The Corps hasn't had time to do it. So anyway, good project, moving forward, and hopefully, we'll see that go to construction in the near future.
President Trump has stood up to President Putin and.
Excuse me, sorry about that.
Second by the apple.
We were talking about Trump, so I thought I'd. We also had the Highway 190 groundbreaking, and it was just east of the new roundabout out there. And it's kind of, it's, it's quite a project, because not only just, they're not taking an existing road and widening it, they're moving the whole thing over about 20 or 30 feet, building a whole new road with new shoulders on it, and getting it away from the telephone poles. And I don't know whether you've ever driven that stretch out there, but it's, there was no shoulder at all before. I mean, you went off the road, you were on your own. So luckily, that's, that's moving forward, and it's under construction right now, and we should see that completed from Highway 99 to Poplar sometime in the next three to four months, so it's good. Also have been, people just don't seem to learn out there on these illegal marijuana sites. I had a call on this one, and it's the fourth time that we've visited this place for illegal grow site. It's out off of Teapot Dome. And then the other one, a farmer called me, and he says, "Hey, this guy's stealing my water out here," and I got the look, and he's got a great big marijuana farm back there, and he's stealing my water. So I got ahold of Mr. Mike Groves, who runs our coenforcement on that, and he said that he would take care of it. So like I told him on the one, the fourth time, I said, "You know, you can cure ignorance, but you can't, you can't cure stupid." And so I don't know where these people come from, they just keep coming back with the same deal, same place, but that's all I have.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, the reason I was not available at the meeting last week was I was on a fact-finding mission, Cayucus, for a week, and the facts are wonderful. It was very cool over there. I wore a sweatshirt most of the time when I was sitting in the shade, so on the beach. And I want to thank Kyler for filling in for me, I think, except it just goes to prove the adage that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu.
Tasty.
Been a quiet couple of last weeks because of Fourth of Die Week, and then being on vacation, I do have a couple of meetings this week, on the Kings River Erwimp in Fresno tomorrow, and then our East, East Kings River GSA on, on Thursday, as well as the SGBI meeting on, on Friday in Fresno. So busy week, and it's just amazing to me, is I have, I'm old school, so I have a calendar, and I realize that I'm more than halfway through this calendar in my last year, so it's just amazing how fast this year is moving along. That's all I have for today, and we will now move on to Item 2, which is a presentation given by the Health and Human Services Agency regarding the distribution of laptops. Most of Thunder's been stolen, I think, up here by, to the Tulare County Foster Youth through the iLap, One Laptop Program for Foster Youth. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Chairman Worley, members of the board, Mr. Spada and counsel, Anita Ortiz, Deputy Director of Child Welfare. Supervisor Crocker shared, we had a wonderful opportunity to come together with RCRC, multiple partners, to distribute laptops over this last weekend. So I just want to share a little bit about iFoster's mission. It's to ensure that every child growing up outside of their biological home has the resources and opportunities they need to become successful, independent adults. And so RCRC, along with the National Home Buyers Fund, funded over 1,100 laptops statewide, and they were divided among 35 rural counties, and so we were able to actually benefit from that. So thank you Supervisor Crocker, he actually planted the seed and brought this information back to us early this year, so we're very appreciative of that, and we definitely followed through on this. We were able to have 133 laptops allocated to us, and we joined CASA to determine what youth were most appropriate. And so in order to receive one of these laptops, they, our youth had to be ages 16 to 21 with an open and active Child Welfare Services case. They could not already own a laptop, they had to get their social worker approval and caregiver approval as well. And then iFoster also required them to have a laptop agreement with them. So as Supervisor Crocker shared, and thank you Supervisor Crocker for attending, we did have an event at College Sequoies this past Saturday. We actually, the district attorney actually joined us as well, and we required our youth to attend a 45-minute training on cyber safety and etiquette before receiving their laptops. And then iFoster joined us as well and gave a presentation about the conditions upon receiving them. And then we gave them their laptops, which they were excited about. We had about 80, and I say that's great considering they're teens, and it's hard to get up on a Saturday morning, so that was really good out of the 133. So what did they get this past Saturday? So they were, received a laptop, it already has Microsoft Windows and Office, there's an 11-hour battery life on this laptop. It's semi-rugged, so it can survive our teens, too, and hopefully several years. It's internet-ready, which is wonderful. And they will also receive live tech support, and iFoster will, will check in with them over the next 90 days to see if they have any questions. And iFoster also offers other types of services for youth, as well as like job hunting and things like that, and life skills, so they will connect them with those as well, along with the laptop support. We definitely did not do this alone, of course Supervisor Crocker initially planted the seed, but then we joined together with COS, CASA, iFoster, Child Welfare Services, our local district attorney, and RCRC to ensure that this event went off smoothly and that our youth were able to receive a laptop, which is really exciting for our youth in care, because hopefully, when they return home or they go off to college, they're already set up with a laptop. So I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time this morning to share with you just a great opportunity that we had with RCRC and our youth to come together and provide a laptop to them.
Very good.
So thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any comments or questions? Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Yeah, I would just say that what a great, great program. I think it's really nice to see an entity that the county pays dues to coming back and, and offering this opportunity to kids. And really, it's, the, the program is about equipping foster youth with the skills and tools that they need to be successful adults, and I think that's outstanding. What a noble mission, and I really do think that the cybersecurity training and the effort that goes in to prepare the kids for having these computers is a great thing. And, and don't overlook the provision of cybersecurity training to even older folks, too, over here. I mean, I'm sure that they click on emails, and they get them sometimes, and we get viruses because of it, so.
Only those who come from District 2.
It's important to look out for the cybersecurity of all, so thanks.
Yeah, and I, I just want to echo that. I think it's important for everybody to be connected nowadays as much as we can, especially for, for that age group. I think the cybersecurity class is spot on. And I'm just wondering, whoever's out there, I think it's maybe Rhonda, this makes me think, you know, every year, we do the, the computer giveaways around Christmas time, we've been giving desktops. I don't know if that's possible, seems like desktops are starting to get a little antiquated for folks, and also just want to put it out there, if maybe if the county has more laptops that we could refurbish and get out there, that might be a good thing, too.
Good idea. Supervisor Crocker?
Just to add on to a, a few things that were stated, I know that the National Home Buyers Fund was also mentioned as that, but our actions that we took at our last board meeting, becoming a, a full member of the Golden State Finance Authority, actually runs the National Home Buyers Fund. So, so it's, it's a separate entity from RCRC, but the board is still the same. And so that, the proceeds that that generates really paid for this. So it was kind of outside of our dues, but that they're always looking to partner. And in addition to, to this laptop giveaway, iFoster and Anita mentioned some of the things that they provide, but some of the comments that were made by, by the youth that attended the, as they were learning about cybersecurity, and as well as iFoster, they talked about, they have 25 national employers that are ready to hire any individuals through iFoster. There's a training program that individuals have to go through to make sure they're job-ready. After completing that short program, then these 25 national retailers are ready to provide jobs for them. And so Starbucks was one that was mentioned, and others, and so there was, there was a lot of interest by the youth doing that. And the, and the laptop, why that was really a focal point, was that there's been numerous studies showing that technology and having, having this ability at this age really helps with long-term success for foster youth. And so that was really the impetus of making sure that we're having success for a long, for a long term. And, and then the last couple of things, iFoster also does eyeglasses and dental work as well as part of that, so they're, they're really looking at any type of, anything that goes, you know, any barriers that, that our foster youth may have, they're trying to remove those to make sure they're as successful as possible. This was one-time funding, and so this is good for now, but I would be very interested in the future that we looked at. I think the, the amount would be a lot less, because, you know, if it was ongoing, it would, it would just need to be, you know, new individuals that qualify for that, but I, I'd be interested in looking at that, you know, continuing this program from us, from the county in particular.
No, great program, just glad that we could participate as a RCRC member and.
Very good. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Take up item number three, and let's adopt the resolution proclaiming the week of July 15 through the 21st as Probation Services Weekend to Tulare County. Somebody presenting on this, or am I just gonna be presenting proclamation? Chief Bonwell, I have you on my list here, so thank you.
Wasn't planning on it.
You're the, you're here for the presentation. Did you want to say anything, or did you just?
Good morning, Chairman, Board, Counsel, and Mr. Spada. I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging the department and the critical role we play in the justice system. It is with those that are here and many officers in the field that we provide supervision, support, and rehabilitative services to over 6,000 clients in the county. So just thank you for the acknowledgement.
So then I will read the proclamation, and it says, "Whereas the Tulare County Probation Department is an essential part of the criminal justice system," which you just said, "whereas probation professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas probation staff are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders, and whereas probation staff work in partnership with law enforcement agencies, community organizations, and groups to provide public safety services to our communities and rehabilitative programs to offenders, and whereas probation staff provide services, support, and protection for victims, and recover restitution for these victims, and whereas probation staff promote prevention, intervention, advocacy, and offender accountability, and whereas probation professionals advocate community and restorative justice, now therefore be resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize the week of July 15 through the 21st, 2018, as Probation Services Week in Tulare County, and encourages all citizens to honor these law enforcement professionals and recognize their achievements. Signed, Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpoel, Amy Shuckley, and Steve Worley, and Mike Guinness." Congratulations. And you know, I think oftentimes probation is sort of the forgotten arm of, of public safety, but they know, we know they produce, provide a very, very valuable service, and it's not just juveniles, it's adults, a combination thereof. And I know your organization is very actively engaged whenever we have community projects, any type of program we have in our communities, you're very thoughtful about providing people to come there and, and participate, and so it's, it's much appreciated, and so we thank you very much. Yeah. We should like to have staff come forward, so we can include them in the, in the photo. We'll shift back a little bit.
Steve just really wants to show off that white suit.
May need to back up a little more. I'm gonna have to stand on my chair to get in the picture.
I know, to photobomb, you're gonna have to stand up on the dials.
Jump at the right time.
Right. Only get four inches off the ground.
Your vertical jump is.
I gotta get a running start.
Ready, one, two, three.
Very good, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, while you're, while you're walking up, real quick, I just, I appreciate you making the, the points that you did in your, your comments. You know, this is a, an opportunity that comes very few or far between to recognize the probation department. You said it very well in saying that they're often the overlooked arm of law enforcement, but I think this week is an opportunity to show how much we, the public, really appreciates what you do, because you are such a valuable part of the law enforcement community and the rehabilitation of those who have committed crimes. And your willingness to be a partner in community events and be present throughout the county really does send that message very clearly to the residents of the county, that probation is here to hold them accountable, but also here to help. So I really appreciate what you do, and all of you today, thank you for coming, and know that you are appreciated.
Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Crocker?
I just want to thank our, our probation chief. She's continued the, the long tradition of being forward-thinking that her predecessor had, and being a leader, and I really appreciate that. And I think as, as we move forward in, in California's law enforcement landscape, there's going to be more of an emphasis on probation, is, is what it looks like. And so it's, it's absolutely critical for what you individuals do day in and day out, and it's gonna be even more critical in the upcoming future, so thank you.
Very good.
And I do believe this is an action item, Mr. Cheff. There's no further comments, I would move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you for being here today. Comes now to Item 4, which is public comment, and you wishing to address the board this morning on items which are within our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda, are welcome to do so. I see Samantha coming forward.
I'm all, already here. Yes, that's what I'm here for. Good morning, Board, CAO, Ms. Peterson, Samantha Ferrero, Board Representative. I'm joined this morning with Abriel "Atta" Mirano Gonzalez. I've been practicing his name with a little, little flair. She's our summer intern in our office this summer, and I just wanted to publicly introduce her. She's a graduate of our Step Up hashtag Lead Program in the Visalia cohort, and as part of that program, we work with Health and Human Services and CSSET to offer employment to those who meet the qualifications for summer employment. So she's here to gain experience in our office. She's a graduate of El Diamante High School in Visalia, and will be attending San Diego State University this fall, majoring in Business Administration and an emphasis in Human Resources. So she's got a photography background, we threw her right into the fire this morning, and this is day three, and she's already worked on a lot of projects for us, so we're really happy to have her here this summer.
Well, welcome, Abriel. Did you want to say something to us?
I just wanted to say thank you, I'm really excited to be working with you, and I'm really grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, thanks for being here.
She'll be following Peter around all day with the camera.
I'm not Mike Boudreau. Where's Mike at? Where's he at?
He's not here.
Disregard those last comments. Any other public, public comments at this time? If not, we will close the public comment period and take up our consent calendar. Items 7 through 33, are there any items which members or the public choose to handle separately?
26.
Number 26. All right, any other items?
Just a comment on Item 30. It mentioned that City of Exeter has their own fire department, and we, they contract with the county, so just a correction, so we, we provide the fire services for them.
All right, any, we'll go ahead and take the consent calendar this time, absent the Item 26, so.
And I think we should also just highlight, too, the Item 28, the Avenue 152 Safety Improvement Project. That did come significantly under bid, which is a really great thing to see even in this construction environment.
Right, very, very good.
Please approve.
A motion by Supervisor Shuckman, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Now we'll take up Item Number 26. Approve the certified statement of vote.
Yeah, I don't, I just have comment on this. I just want to applaud, I don't think, Michelle's not here, and she, her and her staff, who did, I think, an incredible job with this, probably their first big election since Michelle has taken over, other than the hospital recall. I spent a few hours, election night, there at, at headquarters, and what they, what they have to do to make sure, you know, the integrity and the validity of the count, you know, I think nowadays with, we talk about technology, with all our technology, folks think, "Well, the polls close at eight, we should have results at 8:01." But there's quite a process that they have to go through with all the polling places to break down and secure the votes and all that, and I know there, prior to, there were, you know, some critics, election night, that after the election went and sat during the count for their candidates and whatnot, and actually were very impressed and kind of ate their words as far as, you know, the criticism. So kudos to Michelle and her staff for a job well done on this election. That's it.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Shuckman, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes, the votes are unanimous. And I was just going to say, the irony of this new technology is that the very first year I ran, 20 years ago, we knew the results within 30 minutes of the closing of the polls. At that time, they were able to just transmit from the various locations, the, the results immediately back to the, to the office, and I remember walking out of the room and coming back and being congratulated on being elected, and I thought we'd just gotten started. So it's funny how we, I mean, we go through these processes now to be more secure, I think, and safety as far as the electoral process, but we've gone backwards in terms of how long it takes to find out their results, so, so being with technology.
And I think even with Russia not meddling in it, she, she deserves a round of applause. for that too.
We have proof of that.
Or Armenia or whoever.
Okay. All right. So we now will take up our timed items and those are items number five and six. Good morning, Department of Labor Director.
Good morning. Reed Schenke with the Resource Management Agency. And today I've got two road vacation items, both very similar. I'll go through them rather quickly here. First is a vacation of Avenue 356. With this, we do have a public hearing, so I don't know practically if we need to open the public hearing before staff report or not.
Well, what we'll do is, we will now open the public hearing and you will proceed with your presentation.
Very good.
Robert, I think you'll be the next one.
We'll call you, yep, you're welcome to...
Yeah, Robert, if you want to have a seat, we'll call you up just a moment. It'll take a little while to do this. It needs to take a little bit of time.
So this first item is a vacation of Avenue 356 between Road 176 and Cottonwood Creek. The request is, we received a petition to vacate this portion of the roadway and the intent is for, to improve safety of the employees during farmer, farming operations related to the harvest. This is a non-maintained roadway and you'll see in a photo here shortly of the details. Here's the location. It's kind of in the triangle between Ivanhoe Wood Lake and the Yedim Civil area, right in the middle along Cottonwood Creek. And the map on the right-hand side is the specific location of the right-of-way there. Here's the aerial photo of the location. You can see that Road 176 and 356 are maintained roads, but that yellow highlighted portion is the proposed vacation. There is no bridge over Cottonwood Creek, so it's kind of a dead-end location there. Here you can see photo of primarily just farming operations taking place there and no real vehicular access occurring through. Another photo looking to the east. We did publish our notices of intent to do this. We published it in the newspaper and then mailed out flyers and per Streets and Highways Code, we received the 10 signatures of freeholders within the county to proceed with this. So with that, we would be requesting that we do continue, the public hearing, determine that the subject excess right-of-way is unnecessary for present or prospective use and the vacation is in the public interest. Order the subject right-of-way be vacated, reserving, accepting and easement and right for public utilities. Determine the vacation is exempt from SEQA and then direct the clerk of the board to cause a certified copy of the resolution to be recorded. The petitioner here is Mr. Robert Laboue and he's willing to speak or answer any questions you may have about this issue. That concludes my report.
Very good. Was this time we entered time public comment on this matter? Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah. I'm Robert Laboue. I am the petitioner on this and we've owned the property on both the north and south side for probably 15 years and the last four or five years, we've been having actually problems with vandalism. Actually, we think it's big hauling trucks running over trees on the back corner of the property. They get down there for some reason and I think it has to do with the internet mapping system. Sometimes they take you places where you really don't need to go and you get a truck down there, he can't turn around. He, he goes along the creek another eighth of a mile, runs into a dead end, has to make almost a U-turn and actually literally runs over trees that are 15 feet, 14 feet tall, just runs them over slowly, breaks the top off and that's happened four years now, basically. We lost three or four trees. Some of them we actually straightened back up, other ones we just have to replant. So it's sort of like, I'm getting real frustrated. I thought maybe some type of barricade, oh, a little bit off the road so they can see it. It's not a through road, basically. That's, that's the only thing I can think of. It's, it's absolutely amazing that they can do that and, and keep their truck going at the same time. But for this, this one piece, it's more of a protection from vandalism, basically. And it is unpaved. It doesn't go anywhere except a dead ends into the creek and so I thought maybe this might be a good way to go and I can get some control over that road and so that's, appreciate your concern.
I think we're all in agreement with you, Robert.
All right. That's that one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No.
Just real quickly, a side note, last time I saw Robert was up at the Centennial Celebration at Willstone and we had a very nice conversation and it's good to see him back on the low lines. All right. Thank you. Any other public presentation at this time? If not, we will close the public comment, close the public hearing, rather, and bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Crocker, seconded by Supervisor Shuckman. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you, Reed. And now we'll take up item number six.
So again, item number six is another vacation, similar, same applicant petitioner, different location. So again, we will be holding a public hearing, so I'd request maybe that we open the public hearing at this time.
The public hearing is now open.
So this is a vacation of Meredith Drive between Avenue 200 and Avenue 204, north of the community of Strathmore. Again, the request is between Avenue 200 and 204 on Meredith Drive. The purpose or the intent is to improve safety of the employees during the farming operations related to the harvest. Meredith Road's also designated as County Road D-228A. It's actually a half mile roughly of Tulare County maintained mileage road, so it is a paved road in this case. Traffic circulation however, will not be impacted as you'll see in a later slide here. And the location is just north of Strathmore. Meredith Drive is adjacent to or parallel to the inactive railroad tracks there and just on the other side of those railroad tracks is Orange Belt Drive, which is a much more used road and much more improved for actual transportation uses. Here's an aerial photograph. You can see it's just north of the community between avenues 200 and 204 on the west side of the train tracks there. Photo looking north, you can see it's a fairly narrow road. It's paved, but is probably not one that gets more, gets a lot of attention from our road crews in this case. And there it is, looking south. See the train tracks, the inactive railroad alignment there. And then just adjacent to that is Orange Belt Drive, so it's only about 50 or 100 feet or so to the east. Again, we're holding the public hearing, determine, we would request that your board determine the subject excess right-of-way is unnecessary for present or prospective use and the vacation is in the public interest. Order the subject right-of-way be vacated, reserving and accepting an easement and right for public utilities. Determine the vacation is exempt from SEQA and ultimately direct the clerk of the board to cause a certified copy of the resolution to be recorded. Again, in this case, the petitioner is Mr. Robert Laboue and he would be available for any questions if you have of him.
Very good. Public comment on this time. Mr. Laboue? Look like you're in the land acquisition business right now.
I know, he's trying to protect his property. This is more of a safety business in this case. We've had the property on the west side for over 30 years, basically. It's been in citrus. We're just in the process of replanting that block. Last year, we took the trees out, ripped it and so it's in the, actually starting tomorrow, we'll be planting that too, sumo's. And so anybody knows sumo's, it's a mandrum, very large piece of fruit. It's picked in little totes with little trailers and so there's no forklifts or anything. So there's a lot of equipment, a lot of people in and out of there. It's picked during the winter. So, and I'm just looking at a safety issue here. The road actually would be a great place to do things, but if there's traffic on there, it's awfully difficult to make all this stuff work. My sprayers over the years have always complained too, because this road is not at a perpendicular angle, it's at a, at a skew, basically. So it's hard for them to look well over their shoulder in one direction to see if there's traffic coming to come out. So they, they've had some complaints in the past, especially spraying at night, cars just driving down through there. It sort of gets them unnerved a little bit. So I thought maybe this might be an opportunity now that we're replanting this block to see if we can get this road in a situation where we can keep people more safe, basically. It would help quite a bit in my, in this case. And like was presented, there is another county, a very nice county road, the orange belt, old orange belt 65 that is there, that is 100 feet to the east and it parallels it the whole length. So I'm, I thought maybe this is an opportunity at this time. So I appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I understand, please.
Yes, supervisor.
Is it gonna gate that, hit both ends so that people can't drive through it?
Definitely not right-of-way. I mean, we're looking at, you know, okay, how are we gonna protect my, my, I don't want to put a telephone pole across there and say, okay, you know, and then have somebody hit it. That's, that's not our intention. We're thinking of just starting with private road signs on each side and then slowly maybe trying to narrow it down, letting people know that this is a private road. With just some little barricades or something and then, it's gonna take a while to get the public to pick up on that. It's sort of used as a shortcut. Instead of going back on 65, they can use that one and come in and a little bit on Strathmore and so anyway, yeah.
Very good. All right. No other comments? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Move to second.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. We just lost a bit of our maintained system there. Only leaves us with another 3,000 miles left. Okay. Now we'll take up our untimed items and the first item should be item number 34. Request from the General Service Agency to approve the lease agreement with Courthouse Squares Ventures LLC.
For Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, John Hess, General Services Agency Director, just wanted to introduce Matt Ainsley and let him have a few moments here to share with you an update on the project we're now completing.
Very good. Matt, good morning.
Hey, good morning. All right. Well, been a few months since I've been here. Almost done. Now, getting, getting ready to start, working on the demo permit right now. So the plan is, is as soon as we close escrow, which I think is probably gonna be August 1st, we'll be doing the, some of the tree trimming and tree removals. The city's on me to get rid of those big ash trees that are there, that are lifting up the sidewalk and everything, everything there. And then get up all the temp fencing and start demolition, probably, and when I say demolition, it's obviously like internal and cleaning out some stuff. So that'll be going on for the first couple of months while I'm working on my more, my improvement permits and then we'll get going. So the plan is, I've given myself about 18 months to finish that, so hopefully February 2020. And I think we've gotten through most of the issues with the city, but there's a lot of small details still that, few things still, once we demo, that we'll be able to finally see a couple of, a couple of the final quirks that we're trying to nail down. But until then, you know, we're, we think we're on the right track. So hopefully we'll be open to the public by, by then, February 2020 and have a pretty cool amenity to the county and to the downtown district for an option for events and, and venues and staying the night, stopping in, things like that, so.
Question for you, Matt.
Yeah.
Being a historic structure, do you get some relief from ADA requirements or are you gonna have to meet all of those?
Yeah. So there's, you know, we've, we've done our best to bring as much as we can up to the Cal Green current code that's out there. There are some areas that we're following underneath the historical building code. We're still exploring, so it's a, it's a, you know, a local registered historic building. It's not a state or federal. We're still exploring the option of going to state and federal, just because there's some potential tax implications, but we're trying to fully understand what strings come attached with that, which, you know, there's always something. So, but yeah, there's, so, so for instance, you know, with the current code, you would need to have two full, two-hour fire-rated egress exits from every floor and the city won't count the existing one that goes down the middle of the building and those have to be separated by more than like a third of the distance and all this stuff. So to meet code, you actually would have to put two fully enclosed staircases on the exterior on both the north and south side of the building, all the way to the roof, all the way to the underground. So, you know, we took that in and obviously historic preservation, the city, we're kind of like, well, you know, that's not gonna really cut it and I don't think the county would have been too happy about that either. So the city, due to the historical code, there's now just a single fire-rated staircase that's on the east side, which is kind of the least architectural side due to the fact that it's where it was connected to the original courthouse building. So there's a five-story fire-rated staircase on the exterior that goes up there, which it looks pretty good. It's kind of tied into the architecture of the building. But that's, that's one area, for instance, where, you know, we went in with the fire marshal and building department and they were able to say, well, due to his, the historical code, you know, we can, we can, we just need one fire-rated full, fully enclosed exit instead of two. So yeah, there has been some areas where we've, where we've been able to, you know, rely on the historical code. We could probably rely on a lot more than we are, but we are trying to fully meet, you know, as much of the current code as we can, just so that, you know, we don't have issues down the road with something.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think since I think about the old courthouse, that was actually annexed to the old courthouse, the original structure. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, thank you, you and your partners again, for stepping up and, and taking on this task. You have a, quite a buzz throughout Visalia regarding your project, so a lot of eyes are on you, but I, I know you will prevail and, and put out a beautiful product and I hope to stay the first night you're open.
All right. Sounds good.
Make my reservation.
Double the rate for...
That's all right. Hey, that's all right.
500 a night for a...
Never mind.
Well, I, I appreciate it as well. I think this is something that's, that's great as far as getting surplus property off our books and not only something that wasn't just, that, that, that wasn't being utilized, but also was a cost to us. And I, and I think that's, that's something that shouldn't be taken lightly and so that, so we appreciate the partnership. And my request is that rather than having presidential suites, if you have a supervisory suite, you know, it could be a capital, county capital residence or something, you know, it's, it's a ways to get from...
Whatever you want to pay for supervisor, I'm sure they'll be glad to accommodate.
That's the old Board of Supervisors chamber, I think, at one point.
That's right. 20 bucks a night? That sounds good.
How much? 20.
One, one quick comment. Matt, I just, I appreciate the partnership, but also I think that this also shows a great process that the county went through to get to this point. It was a competitive process. Multiple options were evaluated and you put together a project that ultimately is going to be in construction and come to fruition in 18 months.
Yeah.
And I think that's really fantastic. So kudos to our staff for going through this process and to the board for having the foresight rather than continuing to maintain this cost on our books to, to turn what has become an eyesore in downtown Visalia into something really tremendous. So it will become a destination. I have tremendous confidence in what you guys are doing. So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Very good.
And also don't forget, it's gonna go on the tax rolls. I'm sure Matt hasn't forgotten that.
Speaking of which, now we'll take a lease agreement.
Wait, what? I thought, no.
We'll pick it, we'll take up the lease agreement so we can, so he can pay his taxes.
Yeah. Cass said he was gonna phase it in over 10 or 20 years or something, but no, kidding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And no further comments, just happy to proceed with the project.
Okay.
And this item is for the lease of the...
Well, there's multiple items on there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of SEQA items, the lease for two years for probation and so forth. All of that's part of the closing of the project and getting the title over to them.
Right. Motion by Supervisor Shuckman, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Hope you don't find any, I know remodeling what that's like.
Wait till escrow closes.
You never know what you're going to find.
That's right.
All right. We'll take up item number 35. This is to receive an update from General Service Agency on the implementation of the Parks and Recreation Strategic Business Plan. Good morning, Neil.
Hey, good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spada and Ms. Peterson. I'm Brooke Sisk, General Services Agency Assistant Director and with me is Neil Pilligard, the Division Manager for Parks and Recreation. And we're here before you today to provide an update on several matters that pertain to the Parks and Recreation Strategic Business Plan. So here's our presentation outline. We'll give a brief introduction and background. Then we will, we will discuss several items that pertain to Mooney Grove Park and update on parking on Avenue two-seventy-two, an art project that is planned for the Lily Pond and the rowboats. We'll be requesting approval to install a disc golf course at Bartlett Park. And we will discuss the proposed addition of an eleventh county park in Goshen. We'll provide, provide an update on a grant award for Woodville Park. And last, we will provide an update on progress made toward improving customer service through technology. So the Parks Division manages ten parks throughout the county with a total of six-hundred-and-twenty-eight acres. The annual budget is approximately two, two million dollars with twenty-seven employees. And in twenty-fifteen, you establish the Parks Advisory Committee to create a forum for public input. We have two members joining us today, Carol Finney and Nancy Hawkins, who are in the audience. In June twenty-seventeen, you approved the Parks and Recreation Strategic Business Plan. And the four main initiatives of that plan are listed here and include establishing a maintenance and improvement program, an annual evaluation of one-time project funding, increasing public engagement and outreach, and improving customer service efforts. In March, we provided an update on our progress toward each of these initiatives. And as I mentioned, we're gonna discuss several items that pertain to these initiatives today. On March twenty-eighteen, you approved the designation and signing of a no-stopping restriction on both sides of Avenue two-seventy-two, beginning east of Mooney Grove Park, which are the Visalia City Limits, and ending at Road one-twenty-two between the hours of nine o'clock PM and six o'clock AM, seven days a week. And this was a first response to concerns voiced by area residents. And several residents attended that meeting to provide public comment on the matter. RMA installed the signs on both sides of Avenue two-seventy-two on April fourth, twenty-eighteen. To further address the public concern, area residents were invited to attend the Parks Advisory Committee meeting on May second, twenty-eighteen to provide input as to whether the parking restrictions were meeting their needs and discuss other possible solutions to further address the problem. Those in attendance continued to voice concerns that they felt strongly that the parking ban should be a full twenty-four-seven ban and not just during certain hours. So staff conducted a detailed analysis of the possible solutions and that included road signs that further limited the parking avail, the parking and availability of parking within park boundaries, keeping the park open seven days a week instead of five. And because the nature of the issue is multi-jurisdictional, um, increased collabora, collaboration with other local entities, including the Tulare Irrigation District, City of Visalia, and Sheriff's Office. And to further elaborate that a little bit, the irrigation district owns easements within the county right-of-way on which the parking is occurring and has indicated they're also in favor of a full twenty-four-seven parking ban. Um, with the sheriff and police department, they each have law enforcement jurisdiction for different sections of the area along two-seventy-two where the parking is a concern. After conducting the analysis and receiving the input from the neighbors, local jurisdictions, and park advisory committee, the following actions have been taken or recommended to address the public concerns. Paving was completed at one of the parking lots immediately adjacent to one of the disc golf courses to ensure availability of adequate parking within park boundaries. And the picture on the slide, um, up on the screen right now shows RMA Roads completing the work. They did a great job and did it very quickly and cost-effectively. Also, the parks' operating hours have been extended from five to seven days a week and this offers the community greater access to the park and further deters them from parking outside park boundaries. Finally, we're requesting your approval to replace the existing no-stopping, nine o'clock PM to six o'clock AM time-restricted signs with no-stopping anytime signs on Avenue two-seventy-two. So the next project we're gonna talk about is, um, a Lily Pond art project. So a popular feature in Mooney Grove Park's history is an above-ground pond that included water lilies, fish, and a fountain. Due to the need for repairs and high cost of ongoing maintenance, the pond now sits empty and in a state of disrepair. In an effort to avoid demolition, honor its history, staff have partnered with the, um, Arts Consortium on a request for proposals to design, create, and install a public art project to repurpose that non-functional pond and fountain. And submissions are due to the consortium on, um, Friday, July twenty-seventh by, uh, midnight. And more information is available on their website, which is listed on the slide. Uh, it's also requested that if one or two members of the board are interested in reviewing those proposals with staff and Parks Advisory Committee, um, that would be really helpful. And then we'll come forward with a subsequent recommendation for which project to proceed with.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So I'm gonna turn over to Neil.
It was gonna be, but now it's not.
So we started operating the rowboats last fall. Uh, last fall, it was an overwhelming success. We started them up again this summer. Uh, we got a lot of people come out, a lot of good comments about it. Uh, we're operating six boats right now. We haven't been selling out every Saturday or Sunday, so it hasn't justified getting additional boats yet, but we're going to continue to monitor that and if necessary, we'll enlarge our navy. Among the things that we're bringing today is the request for a new disc golf course. We currently have three in the county, two at Mooney Grove, the Perry Championship and the Perry Outback, and the Kings River Park Disc Golf Course. These have been very popular. Uh, you see people playing literally every day of the year. We're excited. Last year, we, uh, hosted on October fourteenth the largest junior disc golf course event in the world in history. We had a hundred and thirty-eight players. Uh, we have additional sponsors this year, including the Film Commission, and we're looking at a hundred and ninety-eight players currently registered with spots still open. So it just keeps growing and we're really excited about it. Along these lines, uh, we've had requests from players in the Porterville area to add a disc golf course at Bartlett Park. We had a fundraising tournament and we had a sanctioned tournament in July, um, which we had seventy players. It was very well received. It was a very busy time in the park. They were able to play in the park and not disturb other parties that were picnicking and fishing and, um, enjoying the park. So we had, uh, the local disc golf close, disc golf club, the Visalia Disc Golf Club, affectionately known as the Flying Monkeys, has already raised, uh, all of the funds and donations necessary to install the course.
How much is that? Just curious, how much is it to put in a course?
Uh, the ones we've put in with grants were right around twenty thousand dollars.
The next item is a proposed eleventh county park. So, um, many years ago, the Tulare County Redevelopment Agency constructed a combination drainage basin and park space in the community of Goshen along Betty Drive. Following, um, the redevelopment agency's dissolution, RMA has overseen the basic landscape maintenance of the property through a contracted vendor with allocation from the general fund. As the management and operation of parks is outside the core mission of RMA, it's proposed that the most effective long-term solution is to transfer the operation and ma, management of this property to, uh, General Services Agency Parks and Recreation Division as the eleventh county park. And this proposed transfer will be included in the board's approval in the fiscal year eighteen-nineteen budget request. So we're not asking, um, for your approval on that today. We are asking for your approval on reaching out to the community to, um, find out what their priorities are and discuss the possibility for a name. So through that process, we would like to assess the necessary repairs to outline one-time and ongoing maintenance costs.
I'm really excited to come back after requesting permission to apply for a grant and tell you that the state has awarded a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for our Woodville, uh, project. Uh, it's a Cal Fire Grant, uh, Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund. And we'll be planting three hundred trees. It'll be a general fund cost of twenty-two thousand four-sixty. Uh, we'll have a joint project where county park staff is going to be doing part of the install. CSET will be doing part of the install and the Urban Tree Foundation is helping with the design and project management. So it's a really exciting project. This park has been, uh, without water for quite some time and we're excited to get it turning back around the right direction.
Does that include putting in a new well?
It's actually on the Woodville Water District System, so we won't need a well there.
Since our last presentation in March, we've worked with IT staff to develop a website for Parks and Recreation. And this site includes an interactive map of the parks as well as information on operating hours, reservation fees, and contact information. The site's currently available, um, from the county network. IT is still finalizing security protocols to make it available to the public on computers that aren't within the county network. And we expect it to go live before the end of the month, so it's very good timing as this is our busy season. We get a lot of calls with people that would like to be able to find more, more information than is currently available on the internet. And the next phase of the technology project is to upgrade the parks' reservation system. And we'd like to, uh, allow customers the option to reserve arbors and campsites online and pay the associated fees with a credit card on the website. So we've narrowed down a few different options for systems and will return in, um, the coming months with a recommendation. So that concludes the presentation. Um, in summary, the requested actions are providing an update on the park's strategic plan, approving revision of the signage along Avenue two-seventy-two and the related sequoia provisions, approving installation of a disc golf course at Bartlett Park and the related sequoia provisions, sequoia provisions for the grant-funded project at Woodville Park, and conducting a community meeting in Goshen to discuss priorities for the proposed eleventh county park and a possible name. So thank you for your time today. Does anyone have any questions for, uh, me or Neil?
It's a pleasure.
Um, a cou, a couple of questions and comments. A great, uh, great presentation and I, I think it's really amazing to see, uh, where the parks have gone, uh, over the last few years. I think the Parks Advisory Committee has really done an outstanding job in providing public opinion to, uh, General Services and helping to direct the department in the improvement of our parks. Um, this is such a, a great opportunity to provide recreation and, uh, activity in, in very isolated areas and unincorporated communities where they may not have things to do. So I, I think we're doing a great job on that end. Um, I agree with the no parking on Avenue two-seventy-two. I think that makes a lot of sense and will definitely make the, uh, neighbors and concerned citizens very, uh, happy, I think. Um, in terms of adding, uh, an eleventh park, uh, since, since I've been on the board, uh, I've seen the county get rid of a park. Um, and we got rid of the Elk Bayou Park in Tulare and that went to the city of Tulare. Um, and adding a park, uh, in that vein, it would seem that the answer would be an easy no. But, um, really in this situation, with what we've been able to do with our parks and how things have been, been being conducted and just the mere transfer with an RMA to, uh, the General Services, I think, makes a, a ton of sense. Um, and I'm glad that we're going to be doing outreach in the community of Goshen to, uh, take into account their desires and, uh, their wish lists, so to speak. Uh, let's not get too carried away. Uh, make sure we involve the Parks Advisory Committee in the vetting process. Uh, and in terms of, um, the ad hoc committee or the, the group of two to, uh, review the Lily Pond Art Project in Mooney Grove, I would be happy to work with Supervisor Shuckland in reviewing those proposals. I, I'm fine with that. Um, and, uh, in terms of naming the Goshen Park, um, I really, in, in my opinion, I think it makes a lot of sense. I know that we have a naming policy, uh, as long as it's within the naming policy. Um, I really think that it would be, uh, very prudent for this board to name the park after the current district four supervisor who's going to be retiring this year. Um, and a, a twenty-year career on the Board of Supervisors and seeing the park system transform the way that it has, uh, I think that would be very fitting, in my opinion, so that's, that's all I have.
Supervisor Shuckland.
Uh, a few questions. Uh, first off, I wanna thank staff and, I can't see Carol and Nancy, but Parks Advisory Committee. Thank you very much. Uh, they, they take their task very serious and, uh, I appreciate that. Um, just some highlights, I wanna say, I, I'm glad to see that Mooney's Grove, um, is gonna be open seven days a week. I think it's very important for people to be able to, um, since it is, you know, a lot of parks are not fenced. Since this is a fenced park, I think it's important for people to have access, um, daily. I have one thing, uh, you highlighted the boats, but also the fishing, uh, this last year at Mooney's Grove was very popular. Is that something that will be coming back, you think, Neil?
Um, yeah, so Fish and Wildlife is planning on starting up the, um, rainbow trout stocking again the end of November, the beginning of December. And we're right now studying the feasibility of stocking warm-water fish during the summer.
Oh, cool. Very nice. All right. Um, also, I, I spoke, uh, Friday morning to the Breakfast Lions, which by the way, they meet at six-thirty, which, don't say yes to that again. Lunch, lunch and dinner Lions. Sure, Breakfast Lions, I don't know, but no, it was a good group. Uh, somebody asked about the Veterans Memorial out there, that there's some, is there a memorial by the, the bridge maybe with some plaques and all? And what is the status of that? Cause they were a little concerned.
It is not in very good shape.
Okay.
Uh, it's not something that I'm proud of. We, part of the twenty-year plan includes a design for the replacement of the Veterans.
Right.
We looked at it, we did some work with a local architect. The price tag right now is a little on the high side, so.
Yeah, like eight hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so maybe that's something we can look at just in the meantime to kinda bring this one. I need, I keep meaning to go out there, but when it's a hundred and three out, I don't feel like going to the park.
What, six-thirty in the morning?
I should've went after the Lions, the Lions Club meeting, but no, I went home and went back to bed.
Also, um, we've chosen a candidate for our Community Outreach Specialist position. They'll be starting in August.
Okay.
And one of the, um, priorities on their list of projects when they begin is to start looking at a fundraising strategy and what projects that we would like to, um, reach out to the community, solicit grants, donations, that kind of thing. So, so, um, we'll work with the Parks Advisory Committee and the board to help determine where, where we wanna raise the funds, what's most important and, and if that's one of those projects, I think there's definitely opportunity to involve the community and others in, um, raising funds to do projects like that.
Brooks, along those lines, have you, I don't wanna interrupt you, but have you considered, um, naming rights? I mean, I'm just thinking of like different corporations that could donate, I mean, and, and, you know, sponsored by or whatever. Because, I mean, there's a potential, I think, to generate some significant funds that we've really not availed ourselves of over the years that could do a lot to make improvements there, far and above what we can do with our public funds, so.
Why do you think Pete wants to name the park in Goshen after you? Maintenance and everything comes along with that.
I retired so I can mow the lawns, that's why, I understand now, yeah.
Well, I know you have nice lawn mower, so you can use it.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, that's fine, because, um, this is something I was gonna talk with John about, but I'll just throw it out here, sorry, John, not to surprise you. I met actually last week also with Carol Hayes, who is the, uh, Executive Director of the Visalia Parks and Recreation Foundation. And they are not like an entity of the city. They are a five-oh-one C-three. Um, I know we have friends at Tulare County, but she wants to see about doing more throughout the county with raising funds and enhancing parks, so we'll get together and talk about that, but that is something, I mean, in the time that that's been together, they've raised over three hundred thousand dollars, I think, for the city of Visalia Parks. And a lot of it is, you know, naming rights. We have the J.R. Shannon, um, baseball complex and Mingano Homes soccer field. So, uh, a lot of money has been, been raised, uh, through that, so, um, and that's, what they focus on is community enhancement. So we'll get together and talk about that. Um, the Woodville Park adding, I think it's always good to add a park to a community and to have more open space, so, um, that's a great thing. And I would be honored to be a part of that, uh, review committee for the, the pond, so that's it.
Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I'm supportive of the, of the new signage for Avenue two-seventy-two, but I, I do wanna make a comment that I think we, initially, we, you know, we jumped a little bit quick. If we would've waited a little bit longer and done a little more due diligence, then we wouldn't have had to install the signage that's out there now. We could've just waited and done, you know, no-stopping at any time and then just done one and instead of, uh, going back and having staff resources replace them and then install new, uh, signs, so.
Called adaptive management.
Adaptive management, yeah, it's called knee-jerk reaction, that's what it's called. Um, and then we have, uh, I, I appreciate the, the feedback that we've, that we as a board have, have given, I think, over the last year, year and a half, and, and just, you know, the implementation.
I think, over the last year, year and a half, and just, you know, the implementation, now we're being able to see that. I know there was a, I had seen that Urban Forestry had given out a grant to the city of Visalia for one of their parks, and now we were successful with Woodville, so I appreciate that. I think that's great, that's going to be phenomenal. And then just the website, I think that's, you know, having access and hopefully being able to utilize less staff time for that, for reservations and those activities, and just having more individuals be able to utilize our parks, I think is phenomenal, so I keep up the great work.
Supervisor Innes?
Yeah, I just think it's great that we're looking into the future and putting in a strategic park plan so that we continue to look at our parks, how can we improve them, get the input from the people from the local communities. And of course, I get input from Bartlett Park. They always say, "Have you been out there lately and drove the roads?" And so, anyway, I think it's a good, good program. Of course, I, I still miss the old Bartlett Park. We all know where it is, it's the bottom of Success Lake, so, but, great plan. Glad you guys are looking at things and trying to improve things for the communities that these parks are in.
I thought maybe Supervisor Innes was going to indicate he was going to take him retirement disc golf, since it'll be in the backyard there. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the fact that in a time when many times we see government sort of retreating, what we're seeing here is advancement. So, we are increasing our opportunities, we're increasing the ability of people to participate and access our parks, and I think that's very, very important. It's a demonstration of the financial strength of the county, it's a demonstration of the, of the board and its commitment to the parks, and I want to commend the board and the public for bringing this, because this is one of those situations that oftentimes we have been responsive to things brought to our attention, and the parks is a good example of that. You know, when it was brought to our attention, how we had not, had neglected them, we have responded, and we will have to make more, we're still in the process of making greater responses, but, but I believe the board is doing a good job of doing that. Appreciate very much the presentation this morning. As far as the naming rights of the new park in Goshen, I, I'm not opposed to someone's name being attached to it that's been on the board for 20 years. I just want to make sure that that's something that the community wants to do, because I don't want it to be Steve Worthley deciding that this should be his park, but rather, if the community's supportive of that, then that's, that's up to the community. Anyway, so, any, any other questions or comments?
Do we have a process, process for that? I mean, is it, are our names submitted, and then like the Parks Advisory Committee reviews them and makes any recommendations?
I was thinking about that. There is, you know, there is a public entity in the community, which is the CSD. I think it'd be appropriate to, to approach them, and I mean, they're elected people of the community about perhaps some, even, even though ironically, they were going to take over the park and that didn't happen, but nonetheless, they are the, the one public entity that exists in that community, and I think it'd be appropriate for them to, to review it, and the advisory committee, and coming back to the board, just a thought.
And we do have Administrative Regulation Number 12, which addresses the name and conventions for the county, so we will follow that regulation.
And just real quick to piggyback off what you said, I think keeping the, having the Parks Advisory Committee and having those regular meetings will keep parks on the radar, so I think that's very important.
And one other thing, too, that I forgot to mention, Supervisor Shuckley had mentioned it, the way that the Visalia 501(c)(3) has used naming conventions as an ability to generate funds, to create parks, or to maintain them, or do projects there enhancing them, it's not a bad idea to even consider that for Tulare County also.
Yep.
In the future.
Not just limited to our park system?
Mr. Chairman, there are members of the public here today that are residents, and they may wish to speak on the signage and Avenue 272 matters.
Absolutely. Anybody wishing to address the board this morning? Hands up with, is that for a touchdown, or are you going to come up? Please give us your name and address, and we'd love to hear from you. You can use this microphone over here if you like.
My name is Richard Terry. I live across the street from the park. I do appreciate this new signage immensely. As long as we can get it patrolled, the city of Visalia will do nothing to maintain the no-parking in their area. The Sheriff's Department has been great, but we deal with prostitution, I do, I've watched drug deals go down. It's just such a mess, and I, we really, really appreciate this no-stopping at any time, but it has to be maintained by our law enforcement. That's it.
Noted. Good, thank you, sir.
So, do you call them, or do I call them?
Not me, I don't live there, so it's, the best way to get a response is for someone to pick up a telephone and say, "We got a problem out here," and then they will, they respond.
Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome, thank you. Any other public comments? Very well, bring it back to the board for action.
Well, I have another question, kind of regarding that, not, not to you, Mr. Terry, but to them. We had talked about maybe adding some additional parking in that back area, what is that, the northeast corner of the park? You know, is that something we're still looking at, so that people would not park along across from Mr. Terry's house?
So, we repaved the area that's there in the center portion of the park.
Right.
It should be on the slides.
Right.
That should be sufficient parking.
Okay, now that we're open seven days a week, we don't, yeah.
Because that was part of the issue, if I recall, people wanting to get to the, especially to the golf, the disc situation, and looking for someplace to park, now we're providing them everyday access and a new parking location.
And then one other thing, I forgot, with special events in the park, how do we accommodate that? I mean, how many people, I know we had the Jug Fest, there was probably, what, 3,000 or 4,000 people there? So do we have a plan for that, if, if other folks want to come in with, you know, events that are 1,000 or 2,000 people that circulate through the day? We have a plan for that through the application, right? And I, I know at one time, the city of Visalia had requested that we work with them, not that we would have to get their approval, but at least work with them, since the, you know, traffic on Mooney and whatnot is in their jurisdiction. That's something that we're doing also?
So, we have had a couple of meetings with, with the folks from city of Visalia about that very matter, and with the addition of our new position, we, we want to have that person really work on that collaboration with the city so that we can help each other out on special events, parking enforcement, and any, anything else that might come up. So, we're really developing that relationship.
And do we have that person now?
They start August the 20th.
Is there a name, or?
Her name is Janet Zaragoza.
Okay. All right, with that, I would move for approval.
All right. We have a motion.
One second.
A motion by Supervisor Shuckley, and then a second by Supervisor Innes. Before we take the vote, I just, one thought that came to my mind, the, the boats are only on weekends, is that correct? Okay, so I'm just going to pull, pull out of the history books, Steve Worthley's experience going to Muntz-Sultana School, where we used to take our fourth and fifth grade classes to Mooney's Grove, and of course, it was an all-day affair, involving a picnic, involving the boats, involving museum. Do those sorts of things still occur at the park?
Once in a while, we have those requests. They're infrequent, though.
Well, and I'm just thinking that the boats become kind of the, one of the enticements for people to actually participate at the park, and so, looking at those kind of opportunities of expanding the service and advising schools of that, and encouraging them to take advantage of the historic, you know, we've made such big improvements to the History Museum there and the New Museum, there's a lot of reasons for kids to come to this, to that park for educational purposes and, of course, recreational purposes, and so, just, just a thought. All right, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, and thanks for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Item 36 is a request from the board staff to consider modify as needed and approve the responses to the Tulare County Grand Jury Final Report entitled "Pay Up and Recover."
Good morning, Board, CAO, Council, and Clerks. This is the fourth and final 2017-2018 Tulare County Grand Jury Report. The draft response letter was included in the agenda that was posted online, and printed copies were made available. We do place this item under on-time should the board want to hold any discussion or make any changes to the responses. So at this point in time, I will turn to you if you have any suggestions. If not, I will ask for a motion.
Are there any suggestions, corrections to the report, response, not entertain a motion?
Approval.
Motion by Supervisor Innes, second by Supervisor Shuckley. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Item 37 is a request from County Administrative Office to approve a salary increase for position in Tulare County Association of Governments Executive Director.
Keeping with legal requirements, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to County Council.
Yes, thank you. Prior to taking action in open session, I need to announce that the board will consider approval of a 5% salary increase in the amount of $7,689.82 for the position of the Tulare County Association of Governments Executive Director for a total annual salary of $1,614.629. In addition, the TK executive director will continue to receive the same standard benefits provided to Bargaining Unit 11 employees. An administrative error occurred relating to the Bargaining Unit designation when the executive director position was created, so upon administrative correction, the executive director will receive the same standard benefits provided to Bargaining Unit 10 employees.
Good. Any questions or comments?
Is now the appropriate time to roast, Mr. Smallay?
Well, tomorrow at the hot dog day, we can roast him.
Well, I think the guy does, I'm, I'm going to have to say this, the guy does an exceptional of working with Caltrans and the federal government, using major R funds to put these programs together. Right now, we're sitting where we didn't think we would be in 30 years. He's a one and a half billion dollars worth of project underway or have been completed. The man is worth all the money.
All right, is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Innes, second by Supervisor Shuckley. Please cast your votes. And while I'm thinking about it, no, no, not about Ted, it was about, going way back at the meeting and the conversation and your, your public comments about raising the spillway, let's not forget Congressman McCarthy. Because I tell you, there's, there's billions of dollars to be spent, but the way it got directed, I can, I can guarantee you, without Congressman McCarthy or someone of his position being where he was at the time he was and representing that area, that made all the difference, and so, right, so I, I just want, I did want to bring that publicly and, and thank them for that. Okay, that does conclude our public meeting today. We have items for closed session, Council.
Yes, we do. Mr. Chairman, Items A, B, and D are off calendar. Items C, E, F, and G will be heard. I do not expect any announcements out.
Very good. Thank you all for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Mr. Mead.